All this regular city council meeting with City of Ketchikan to order, please call the roll.
Bergeron, Kuss.
Here.
Harris.
Redd.
Carlson.
Here.
Olson.
Here.
Seivertson.
Here.
West.
Here.
Please stand and join me in the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of British Commons, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in the first place.
Nice to meet you.
Love it.
Alright, that brings us to communications. City Councilmember Bergeron has asked for the KIC hatchery thing to be postponed till he's back at the next meeting, guys. John, did you hear that? If you'd like to address it during persons to be heard, you can't, you go ahead, but I was going to move it, most any request from a council member to defer certain item, I've been obliging them, so. That brings us down to persons to be heard. On the list I have Girl Scouts Troop 4075. Come on up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This year our Girl Scout Troop-
Whoa, doesn't know your name.
My name is Bella.
And what's your last name?
Robert.
Thank you. Go ahead.
I'm Ann Cos.
I'm Laura Sherrill. Deborah Lee Kerr, but everyone calls me Debbie.
Alright Debbie. Thanks for coming ladies, go ahead.
This year our Girl Scout Troop has been working on our bronze award. The first step to this award was to make observations around our community and look for ways to, we could make a positive change. We noticed an excessive amount of litter in the areas around our city's new bus shelters. Our idea was to purchase a garbage can for the new shelters by Woodside Apartments and ask for it to be added to the city pickup route.
We contacted Lenny Neely from the city solid waste department. He helped us get a garbage can and agreed to add our chosen site to the city's garbage pickup route.
We painted the can Girl Scout green and decorated with our handprints.
Stone Riley and Cameron Cho-Walter from Steve Thomas's woodworking class at, class at K High designed and created the metal plaid for the top.
We now present this garbage can to the city of Ketchikan. We hope that our decorative can inspires users of the new bus shelter to keep Ketchikan clean.
We would like to express our sincere thanks to the city of Ketchikan, especially Lenny Neal and the solid waste department for helping us achieve our bronze award and make a difference in our community.
Thank you very much ladies. We'll accept it gladly, and I think we'll just leave it right in the middle of the thing here too, till everybody can see it tonight. And we'll have it, our guys go and put it in place and everything, so you won't even have to do that. Thank you. Thanks ladies. Okay, Mr. Carpenter, let's stop that.
Steve Copron, Porton Harbor's director, just speaking on behalf of the Porton Harbor Advisory Board Chair, John Malouf, who is chaperoning the seventh grade camping trip for the next couple of days. He just wanted me to pass on, at their meeting Tuesday night, the draft memo that you have in your packet tonight was approved pretty much as written. All they did, they had me add in on each item, in parentheses, which item that was addressing from the mayor's memo, just to clarify, because I kinda combined them, because some of them were talking about more than one item. So, when the item comes up, I can answer any questions over what was said the other night, but he just wanted me to pass on that for him.
Excellent. Stick around.
Oh yes, always do.
Anybody else want to address the council tonight? Seeing none? I guess John and the guys from KIC will wait till next month, or next meeting. That brings us down to, well consent agenda already. Do we have a motion?
Your Honor, I move that we approve the items on the consent agenda.
We have a second.
Second.
Moved in second. That brings us to-
Your Honor.
Yes.
I'd like to hold item two for a conversation.
You bet. What I'll do is we'll have the clerk read them all, we'll approve one, three, and four, and then Bob, if you make a separate motion on two, we'll take that individually. Madam Clerk, please read the items.
Approval of minutes, regular meeting of May 2nd, 2013, grant applications for funding of mass notification systems, application for restaurant designation permit, the galley, supplemental agreement number one, lease between the city of Ketchikan and the United States Department of Agriculture.
Alright. Anybody have, want to talk to one, three, or four? Dick?
Comment, Lou, on four?
Yes.
I started that game, and I'm surprised thirty years later it's not finished.
Alright, start, let's, oh, sorry.
I have a question on three, the application for the restaurant. Is that something that's done every year? I mean, isn't it already designated?
Go ahead.
Well, it actually, it came a little cart before the horse. We also have a transfer of ownership for that license, which will be on the next agenda. So, we put the restaurant designation on before the transfer of the license. So, the new transfer also has to get, so. No, it only comes once. Sorry about that.
Okay, call the roll on one, three, and four, please.
Harris?
Aye.
Kuss?
Yes.
Seivertson?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Okay, Bob?
You're probably gonna need a motion before I move, is that right? Okay, I'll make the original motion and then we'll discuss it. Remove the city council on Friday staff to grant funding for the purchase of at least two mass notification signals by notification of downstream residents in the Amanda Dam failure at either Ketchikan Lakes or Carlanan Lakes.
Moved in second. Bob?
Yeah, I understand that we have a perk requirement that we have to go in and put in notification system in case of burst of the dam and potential flooding. But there's also a lot of stuff in this memo when we talk about a proposed mass notification system for the entire island. You know, I'm a little, I'm a little concerned because we do have issues within our 911 system about who pays for what, who manages what, and all that kinda stuff. And as I read through this, it becomes fairly clear to me that the responsibility for mass notification probably falls on the borough. And so, I would assume that the information would be coming from the borough to us in regards to the type of systems, funding, and all the other stuff that goes along with that. So, I'm a little, I'm a little concerned about what exactly is required for us at this particular point for the dam notifications as compared to an overall mass notification. I guess I don't want to get into a very complicated computer program run, expensive operation that we're gonna have to fund.
Carl, can you-
I don't want to go there.
I understand your concern, Councilmember Seivertson. We did meet with the borough manager on this a couple of weeks ago, and he did indicate pending assembly approval and defining what the investment might have to be. If the borough wants to exercise its authority relative to moving forward with an area-wide system, you know, he was very supportive of that, but he can't commit at this point. The problem I have is, I do have a FERC deadline that I've gotta meet. We've all agreed that we're gonna cooperate on this, and that anything that we might get grant funding for will be purchased such that it can feed into a borough-operated area-wide system. There's no point trying to get multiple systems out there. The problem is the timing doesn't sync, and I've gotta move forward at this point. What I put in at Ketchikan Lakes, I wanna make sure is consistent with it won't be consistent with what we have at Carlanan Lake now. So, I've gotta look at these two to make sure that both of those will be consistent with what the borough may do at a future point. And the fire chief will be working with their lead emergency planner, which appears to be Mr. Harney, and Frank, do you wanna come up and-
Oh, Dan.
I have a question. It appears that we're just looking at obtaining two right now. What happens when the other ones are sought? It just seems like as, in a twenty-four hour period, things change so much in technology that they don't sync, and there's software changes, and then this program doesn't talk to that program. I mean, if we get these two now, will we eventually be able to tie in the rest of the system, or are we going to be stuck with a system for two, and then we've gotta get a system for six, and then when we get the rest of, you know, it just seems like with telecommunications or with electronics, there's just so many changes, and then software people go out of business, and people change, so.
Frank, Sheriff, Fire Chief, it's actually a really good question, and over the course of time, Sitka's put one together where they brought in extra sirens over the years. As I indicated in my memo, you know, rarely is there enough funding from any one source in any one year to put this system together. So, Federal Signal, they've been really good about keeping their technology the same, understanding that that's the way that they're gonna be able to sell these systems. So, these systems are expandable over time, and they've had really good luck with them. Kodiak, Keene High Peninsula, there's a half dozen places that have been using them for quite a few years now, and they haven't had any problem expanding their system over the course of five or six years.
Dick?
I, I guess I see an eight-hundred-thousand-dollar figure down there, and I don't know whether that includes the whole borough or just what, but I got the impression that's the city. And I know our requirement that we need to meet deals with two lakes. I would like to see the bare minimum to meet that FERC requirement for those two lakes. And I want alternatives. I don't want a gold-plated system that can do it whatever for future. I wanna see what the bare minimum is to compare with what you think you want.
Yeah, and that eight-hundred-thousand-dollar figure is encompassing the entire borough, which could take upwards of twenty-five sirens to reach all the way from north to south. The system is roughly thirty-two thousand dollars for the first siren in the control center that would be up at the twenty-four-hour dispatches, which is where it would need to be located for the control unit. And then each additional sirens, about twenty-eight thousand dollars. And checking with Dave Miller, the fire chief up in Sitka, he budgets roughly five thousand dollars a year for maintenance, and he said he's never spent over a thousand dollars a year in maintenance, and he's got upwards of a dozen sirens. So, they're pretty reliable systems.
Mr. Mayor, the other comment I would make is this motion just authorize us, authorizes us to pursue grant funding at this time. If and when we do get grant funding, we may have a much better handle on where the borough is in terms of what their longer-term strategy is. Any acceptance of grant funding will come back to the council as well as the procurement.
Dick?
I just want to repeat, when this comes back to us, I don't want some expensive system. I wanna see what the bare minimum is too. We've been getting-
Councilmember Kuss, we can do that, but then you have to recognize that the bare minimum may not be consistent with what the borough wants to implement.
Okay, we can work with the borough when we get there. But if we get ahead of the borough, then we don't need to put anymore than we need to.
Okay, Bob?
So, the overall borough-wide system, are we talking that that'll be run out of our command center?
To be determined. It could run from White Cliff, you know, it could run from North Tongis, it could run from South Tongis.
But it has, if it's a mass notification system, is it one of those things that has to be manned twenty-four hours a day type deal?
I would suspect so, but we just haven't progressed that far in the discussion.
And that, and one of the things I just want to make sure is that we, when we look at this, doing it jointly, that we have all the i's dotted and t's crossed, so there's no misunderstanding of who pays for what in regards to operations.
Call the roll.
West?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Seivertson?
Yes.
Kuss?
Alright, that passes six and nothing. Brings us down to unfinished business, 781, ordinance thirteen seventeen twenty-four, amending the Ketchikan Municipal Code relating to sales tax exemptions to healthcare and funeral services, second reading. Do you have a motion?
Your Honor.
Go ahead.
Move the city council approving second reading ordinance number thirteen dash seventeen twenty-four, amending section G of the Ketchikan Municipal Code three-point-oh-four-point-one-zero-zero and title exemptions related to the tax exemptions for healthcare and funeral services established in effective date.
Moved in second. Bob, do you want to add anything?
No.
Alright, call the roll.
Seivertson?
Yes.
Kuss?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Alright, that brings us down to new business, seven-eight-one, septic pumping services for the former Shoreline Service Area. This was brought up at our cooperation, relations meeting from Borough Assemblyman Ellen Bailey. He was interested in our discussion on it, and do we have a motion?
Your Honor.
Go ahead.
I move city council direct city manager to initiate this agreement with Ketchikan Gateway Borough regarding the possibility of placing the former Shoreline Service Area under the auspices of the Borough Septic Tank Pumping Program as determined appropriate by the city council.
Second. Moved in second. Bob, did you want to address it?
Yeah, you know, I read through the document here, and I guess the easy fix to me is to change the designation from non-area-wide to area-wide, and put some language in there excluding cities such as the city of Ketchikan and city of Saxman that are on a utility sewer system. Being that the shoreline is within the borough, it is connected by the road system, and it is accessible, then that would allow them to utilize the program.
Yeah, once you brought that to my attention, I think, if we bring that back to the borough and see if that would work out, and my only concern was, well, if they make it area-wide, what does it, what problems does that cause, and maybe exempting could be the answer. Dick?
Yeah, I'd just like to make sure of a couple of things. One is, what do the Shoreline residents want? Does anybody contact them? Are we just gonna hand it to them? And I'm not saying what's out there is right or wrong. I'm just saying we need-
It gives them another option.
It gives them another option, and I know they're taking care of their own right now, I suppose. But they need to know about it before we do it, and then I think their options, like Bob talked, that we need to communicate with those folks. We're gonna stuff something down there, load it up carefully.
Bob?
Well, actually, a little bit of information that I've gained from Shoreline is, as an individual doing it on their own is more expensive than being involved in a area-wide program. And I understand that the borough is gonna be looking at doing some analysis or assessments of the systems that are out there, and, you know, potentially trying to clean that stuff up. But as an individual, for them to get their septic tank pumped and inspected and worked on and stuff, I think it's by far more expensive than a program. Now, I think that's, what I've heard is they just want to be, have that available.
Dan?
So, when you mentioned pumped, maintained, and worked on, does that mean this fee includes maintenance of the septic system if something comes up?
No, but as, as the contractor is pumping it, they will do an analysis of the system.
With any maintenance.
And then I think the borough will have some, I guess, parameters to look on.
Dick?
Well, and I think we need to have an analysis, is it cheaper or not? And I'm recalling too many years ago, living in Juneau, what it cost me on about every three-year basis to pump the septic tank system and have it check the airway and everything. And I think they're talking sixty, seventy dollars a quarter here.
I think they just raised it to sixty-eight.
Yeah, and over a three-year period, that's a chunk of money, and I know I was not paying half that. But, like I say, it's been a few couple years back, so we need, we need to make sure that that's a fair figure, and I'm not questioning the borough's deal.
Carl, do you have some direction? Because I don't know-
I think I, I can answer.
You bet, Matt.
The only other, I mean, I've had a lot of people from that, an area comment, that they want to get something done for them, to help them take care of the problem, but I am concerned about if they did just raise, I was just looking at numbers here, forty-five, but if it's at sixty-eight, that's per quarter, two-hundred-eight dollars a year. It's at five-hundred-and-sixty-eight, hundred-and-forty dollars every three years to pay for your septic tank to get a check. So, I think that's something we need to check in a bit to make sure that that's okay, or that'll move forward and try to begin our own service out there.
I don't know what the private cost is, but, and it could be, I know they just raised it, and they might be depending on size of the septic tank or whatever. Sixty-eight could be the maximum or something. I read in the newspaper, must be right. Go ahead, Bob.
What does a local city resident pay for sewer fees at this point, per month?
I think it's between forty-two and forty-five dollars per month.
Per month?
Yes, per month, yeah.
So, it's not expensive compared to what we're doing, I guess.
Alright, I think Carl set some direction, if we work with the borough. That brings us down to new business, seven-eight-three, funding harbor operations and capital projects. No, Civic Center, excuse me. We're at number two, discontinuing the use of the Ted Ferry Civic Center as a venue for Ketchikan Fight Club's competitive events. That's Councilmember Seivertson.
Your Honor, I move the city council direct city manager advise the Ketchikan Fight Club that the Ted Ferry Civic Center will no longer be available for a venue for the organized competitive event.
Moved in second. Bob?
Yes, John, I thought that we should probably bring this forward based on information that I've been receiving about the damage that occurs at the facility and how it's managed, and I just think that the Ted Ferry being the building that we use for most of our galleries and events is, it's a wrong venue for that. Bloodborne pathogens, the alcohol, problems in the bathroom. Most recently, I understand they use a moldy carpet, which after everybody walked on it and grounded in, it was also now moldy carpet that took some extensive painting to get that done. And that comes at a cost, and the continued cost of maintenance will go up as this thing proceeds. We're proposing to repair the floors and put brand-new carpeting down, and we have slated in our capital budget to replace the chairs. And they do put these chairs away, but they don't clean them. They have nacho cheese and whatever else they may be eating and filling on them, so it's just not a good venue for it. Now, I understand that the representatives that, like, suffer out of town right now, and after we have some conversation here, it may be appropriate to defer to a point where they can address us, but I just, it's not, it's not a good place for it.
Rhonda, do you want to talk to us about what's going on up there from your view? Please.
Rhonda Bowling, facility manager, Ted Ferry Civic Center. I guess my concerns, well, and I should state too, that I didn't really pick this fight. I'm a little nervous about it. Well, you know, it's pretty common knowledge. I said right to Mr. Duckworth that, boy, I wish you guys had a warehouse for this, you know, and there's no animosity involved in talking to him about this, and he knows I feel that way, but maybe there's just not a warehouse available. But really, with the carpet, the sound absorption panels, the upholstered chairs, you know, the things that come along with the fights, the blood, the vomit, when you get hit in the spleen, you vomit. I mean, there's a lot. And then it takes a full day after the event to air it out. I mean, yeah, it's, it's pretty messy. I understand Jack's concerns, and apparently, and that's where my memo kinda stemmed from, was that the Fight Club wanted to put this as a council agenda item themselves, and so that's what kinda spurred the discussion. And some of the things they wanted to address to the council, if I may speak for them, and of course, please ask them, but they weren't real happy with me charging them a hundred-and-fifty dollars or two-hundred-and-twenty-five dollars extra cleaning. Where, and our building superintendent, Alex Heiser, is here tonight. He volunteered to come because he wanted to be here in case you guys had any questions. But, you know, I didn't think that was excessive to charge for cleaning the whole gallery corridor with beer just soaked into the carpets, because that part is not tarped. And then I know they're concerned they really would rather have their own bar. Instead, the council had directed them in that memo of two thousand and nine that they needed to have a licensed establishment provide the liquor, and I know that that was another issue, they'd like to provide their own bar, because then they could make more money, which is understandable. And then also an issue with the police officers being there. I know that they think that they have so much security that the police officers aren't needed. And so, those were their concerns that I understood as why they were coming to the council. So, it's a little frustrating to me, because a hundred-and-fifty dollars, two-hundred-and-twenty-five dollars for cleaning up blood and beer and all this stuff is really, really pretty reasonable. I mean, it's pretty cheap, actually. So, I brought an invoice. I don't know if you're interested in it. I have some stats. I know what it costs. Well, not exactly, but I know what they pay. I know what we pay out of pocket. We pay about four-hundred-and-twenty-five out of pocket just in salary, and that doesn't include workers' comp insurance or, or any of that, for just our temporary event staff. Four-hundred-and-twenty-five dollars for that one event. And then we also pay about ninety-three dollars in garbage, and a myriad of other fee supplies, you know, the bathroom cleaning, the toilet paper, the, all of that. There's a lot of expenses that can come out of that event. They are a nonprofit, so they get thirty-five percent off of their room fee, so the room fee is really seven-sixty-three for the whole day. If it's not rented the day before, well, a lot of tenants will let them come in and get their tarps down and, and get it all set up the day before at no cost. It helps all of us, because then we can start three hours later on Saturday and save three hours of event staff time. So, there's just a lot of concerns that I have. And again, I have nothing against them. I kinda, I tend to agree with Councilmember Seivertson, that it just doesn't seem like the appropriate venue, and I don't know if it's a good use of that place.
Right?
Do they have anything else scheduled? Do they have the next fight night scheduled?
Dick, and then Dan.
Couple of questions. Rhonda, how, I imagine something in my mind, when the fights are going on, are they standing on the chairs screaming and yelling, and how are they treating the place?
To be honest, that might be a better question for Alex. He actually stayed. I left at seven, because I really, I don't like to watch them. They scare me. I really don't like to see them get hurt and, and everything. But, but Alex was there, he knows. But yeah, that's why we had the tarps going up the walls, not only for the blood that was splattered on, the sound absorption panels that are very expensive, but also because people were standing there kicking the walls. They get pretty excited. And that was another thing, you know, with, there's no smoking allowed in there, but people do have lighters. I don't know if they're using them, but it's a, it's a pretty wild and ruckus event.
Then the other question, you said they're a nonprofit. What do they do with that nearly twenty grand that they make that night? Do you have any idea?
Jack has told me before that they use it for training for the boxers. I don't know what else.
Thank you. But I will ask your friend, that he knows whether they're standing on the chairs.
Come on in.
Come on in.
Hi, Alex Heiser, building superintendent. When I was there, they were not standing on the chairs. It is a ruckus, and I don't just, some of our staff just kinda stays in the back and towards the office, and I actually walk around and keep an eye on things, and- what they call security, I consider lacking, cause their security staff would leave their posts so they could go watch the fights. At one point, one kid was manning three different posts, and the important one was the post that no alcohol should go behind for the underage fighters that are there, and he just couldn't do it. I mean, so I, for that time, I helped him, I mean, but they, they say they have all these security guards, but really, a lot of them are just going there to watch the fights too. So that, that's a big concern for me, especially when they have underage fighters there.
All right, Dick?
One more, Rhonda, you, you kind of showed the cost to us, or what, and they're, are we losing money on that deal what they're paying for that building that day?
Well, if you take our budget for the entire year, which is about, what, one hundred and nine thousand, I think, um, I actually have it written down somewhere here. Yeah, four hundred and nine, four oh four, that's without the capital projects, which is a hundred and sixteen thousand. The, um, daily cost to operate the civic center without anyone in there, just as normal, without using events, well, you're averaging now for the year as eleven hundred and twenty-two dollars per day. So if we're not making that, we're not covering our costs, but when we're only making, the, the total invoice, and this includes some damage and extra cleaning and stuff, was twelve forty-nine, and I'm paying four hundred and twenty-five worth of city paying, I mean, four hundred and twenty-five out in event staff plus five hours of Alex's time that night, seven, I'm salaried, so my time doesn't count, but, you know, um, I think we're losing money.
So you're saying what they paid you for that fight, and what it cost you, we lost money.
If you, yeah, if you want to consider everything, the, all the supplies, the electricity, the diesel, everything.
Okay.
Salary.
That was my question too.
Okay, Bob?
Rhonda, how do you deal with the bloodborne pathogens and the, and the vomit and stuff? Is your staff trained to appropriately clean and disinfect that?
Um, no. I just learned after the last event, because the fire inspector, fire marshal asked me, did he wear glasses when he was cleaning that up? I'm looking at him, he wore gloves, but when you spray the blood, apparently it stays in the wall, it stays on the, I can't even answer, for ninety days. Hep C and a few others stay in that, like that material ninety days in our carpet. So, uh, that's a concern for me, Alex needs to be wearing glasses, and he wasn't, and I said he will next time, so.
My problem is too, as, as, as an employee, and he's cleaning it, if he's not wearing the appropriate coveralls and everything else, he's taking that home with him. Frank, could you talk, I, I asked the fire department to look into bloodborne pathogen and a few things like that.
Thank you.
Frank could talk to that, I appreciate it.
Frank, Sheriff Fire Chief. It's actually all covered in Ocean nineteen ten, one oh three oh, and it's a lot more to it than just wearing the proper equipment. I mean, for us, the fire department, we have to dispose of it properly, I have an infection control officer, I have to send him to training every year, you have to have a policy on hand, how you're going to deal with it, how you're going to clean it. Um, one of the things that it talks about is you can't have any eating, drinking, cosmetics, or smoking anywhere that there, that you're going to have bloodborne pathogens, which is exactly what this facility is used for. And she's right, I mean, when you start looking at things like, like hepatitis C, and now there's a new superbug out there that's a antibiotic resistance strain of gonorrhea that's actually real prevalent on the west coast, that, uh, you know, this stuff's getting worse and worse in, in the bloodborne pathogens, you really don't want them in an area where you're going to be bringing kids into, where you're going to be serving food, you're going to be doing these things. And it's, like I said, I've got nineteen ten, one thirty here, if council wants a copy of it for the record, and it goes through and talks about all the things that you have to have in place for your employees to deal with bloodborne pathogens, it's pretty extensive.
All right, before we scare each other, um, we did, um, I mean, I don't want us to continue this, you know, debate until we get the, uh, Mr. Duckworth here and everything. Um, we can see the concerns and we can ask some more questions, uh, before it happens again. Bob, did you want to have this deferred until the next meeting, or?
To give them an opportunity to respond, I think that would be the polite thing to do. My, my mind at this particular point hasn't changed, it's probably been reinforced by what I hear, so, um, I would move to defer.
Second.
Just one more comment, though, um, we're not qualified to handle these substances and whatnot, but I do understand TSS is, so I think that until, uh, resolution comes play, that might be something you might consider to use in the future, so that employees are not exposed to things that they're not qualified to handle.
I know, I feel like I need to apologize to Alex.
Sorry, Alex.
Yeah, Carl, if, if, we've been cleaning up after these particular, uh, uh, events, and if there's a, you think there's a need for us to go in and evaluate the the processes, we need to do more cleaning now after the information that we've received?
Well, just based on what the fire chief said, I think they're looking at contracting with a professional, and that cost is going to have to be either borne by us or borne by the Fight Club.
The, um, before we get too carried away, I mean, other outfits do this kind of stuff, should we call the MNC, how they handle it, or, I mean, I hate to, to sit here and be scaring everybody, that, I mean, they do this in Juneau and, and other places. At least call and ask.
We can do that, Mr. Mayor.
All right, we got a motion to defer, let's call the roll. Carlson?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Severson?
Yes.
Kuz?
Yes.
All right, that's deferred till the next meeting. Six and a half, that brings us down to, um, item seven eight three, harbor funding operations, capital projects, um, do we have a motion?
Your honor?
Go ahead.
I move the city council director to take such action regarding the recommendations of certain harbor advisory board regarding funding the harbor's operations and capital projects that are determined appropriate by the city council.
Second.
All right, um, this came up, um, through me, from, um, Dave Ashkin and some other fishermen had some concerns, some ideas. Uh, we sent them back to the harbor advisory board, and you see one through six, um, the harbor advisory board made a, um, had, um, agreed with number one, making it, um, two hundred thousand payback a year, so they can use other funds from the fish tax to do projects around the, um, facility. They also were, um, interested in having us go back to Gateway Borough to talk to them about maybe using more of their fish tax for the harbor facilities. And they were also, um, interested in, um, looking at number six, maybe, um, I think it was surveying existing, putting finger floats to see if, um, there's some good candidates for us buying the raw materials and having either KIC or the UAS Construction Academy assemble them, instead of trying to have them put all together down south and shipped up here. I mean, it'd be much more, um, cost effective just to bring up the items and then have somebody put them together up here. Uh, which, um, I have no problem supporting, except, uh, concern, I mean, I don't want us to make a decision on number one for sure, I mean, I'd like to say that we're interested in doing, uh, working on those three, especially, um, two and three, but on one, Carl, you had a concern on number one, and on changing the, um, setup there, can you address that?
Mr. Mayor, my, my concern is, within the next two to four weeks, depending on what Governor Parnell does with potential vetoes to the capital budget, we're going to be bringing forward recommendations on Ketchikan Medical Center. Assuming, uh, the fifteen million dollar appropriation holds, we're five million dollars short of where we need to be, and I'd like all options to remain on the table to try to get that project going forward. Deferred repayment of the loan may take away one option. That, that's all I'm trying to convey at this point, and I'd like to show the council a number of different strategies, um, this may be included, it may not, I just don't know at this point. We're working on them, and I'd just like you to have the opportunity to review those alternatives.
Um, which I support, I'd like to, um, at least tonight, if the council could, um, come in support of number two and number three, and direct the manager to look into those, and we'll wait a couple of weeks to see what the scenario is. I talked with the governor last weekend out at the Totem Raisin at Saks, when I told him how we were thankful for the money, and we're going to do our, um, election this fall like we already have it, and he goes, um, yeah, oh yeah, I'm supposed to sign that, right. So, but I threw it under his hands. And so if there's no objection, I'd like, uh, us to at least, um, direct staff to look at the number, items two and three.
Dick?
Yeah, I, I don't object to two and three, but before we get too far down the tube, I want to make a comment about one, is I don't support using half the fish tax to repay that loan, so, and that may be where Carl's leading. We've got to get it, get it paid off and get it out of the hair if we're going to do it. But by the same token, we didn't agree with that was going to be a loan or a straight out, we're going to do it. And fish tax will stand with whoever, so we need, that needs to come out, and I understand the hospital deal, so we may need to repay it, which I would rather just get the doc turning out of her hair, but, uh.
Well, that money is definitely going to the doc.
Yeah, and, and there's another thing down in here that they've talked about is, uh, they're trying to, to avoid, I want to say another increase in the harbor fees. And if it costs money down there to run that harbor, we've still got to look at user pays, it can't come out of a general fund, users got to pay as much as we can.
Anybody else? Matt?
I'm, I'm a little wary about number one, too, just, we, we put the money over there to do things that were more geared towards the fish, the fishing, um, industry, and we've had this come several times where that fish tax money has been tried to use for the general harbor projects, and not all the general harbor projects would go to benefit those guys. So I would, I would be very concerned if we did that institutionalized, using those raw fish taxes to take care of the areas of the, of the harbor that did not apply to the fishing industry. And I think I'm, I'd also be kind of concerned about applying them to the hospital as well. We've got thirty-six million dollars in funding for the hospitals just from the sales tax, and I think we need to, or if we can fund that, and I think we need to stick to that and, and look to alternative means.
Anybody else? Okay, um, so, let's see the motion.
Give direction, my hand.
Yeah, Carl, um, we're going to wait on number one, we're going to, um, give you a direction to work on two and three. Madam clerk, do we need to vote with that direction, or is he got it?
I don't think so, that's.
Okay, that's the direction we're giving you.
Determine the appropriate account.
Thank you very much. That brings us down to new item seven, A four, change order, number four final, contract twelve nineteen, phase two of verse one and two rehabilitation project, Orin Marine Contractors. Do we have a motion?
Okay, your honor?
Yes.
I move the city council to approve change order number four final in the amount of two hundred and seven thousand, four hundred and thirty-two dollars to contract number twelve nineteen, phase two of verse one and two rehab project between the city and Orin Marine Contractors authorize the funding for the port departments, phase two of verse one and two rehabilitation capital account, and direct the city manager to execute the change order on behalf of the city council.
Second.
Who'd in second, Dick?
Nope, we got a good job down there.
That's good.
That's phase three, go, open there.
Anybody else? Call the roll. Harris?
Hi.
Kuz?
Yes.
Severson?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Yeah, that passes unanimously. That brings us down to seven eight five, which is being deferred on the hatchery until the next meeting. Um, that brings us to, um, number seven, A six, discussion seasonal parking officer, council member KJ Harris.
It's that time again, kids. We seem to do this every year, and I think last year we finally got a spec extra parking officer by mid-July, something like that. My concern with all the construction we got downtown, our parking enforcement officer is going to be forced to stay downtown only, not forced, but we may live in downtown, leaving the entire north end, you know, from the mall, that direction, people park in any way they want. And I think in, in the past, the actual parking enforcement officer has paid for herself by, you know, catching those, if you don't want to take it, don't park wrong. I mean, it's hard to say, I know Lou likes parking enforcement officers. I think it's time, if we're going to get this done, we need to get this done now, get it started up.
Anybody else? Dick?
Okay, KJ, clarify what you want, do we need a seasonal, or do you, we did not, we did not approve a seasonal?
At this point, it'd be just a seasonal in the summer.
So we didn't put a seasonal in the budget? So you got a proposal?
Right, I just proposed seasonal parking, I think we have the proposal here.
Make your motion, KJ.
Yeah, that's what I'm looking for, but I may have lost it. Here we are. I move that we authorize the hiring of the seasonal parking enforcement officer.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Who'd in second, KJ talked to it, so now I can too. Our parking enforcement officer does a wonderful job.
Good answer, Lou.
I have a new ticket this week, I just paid my last ticket last week, and, um, I don't think we need extra people, and, um, I say that every year, so I leave it up to you guys. And I want Deanne to continue.
Did the, um, this isn't last year pay for itself, I mean, tickets and, so, we're not helped?
As far as I'm like from Bob Newell, they paid for all the, the wages, it's like fourteen dollars an hour, there's no benefits and stuff. It was, came up an extra twenty-five thousand dollars in that vicinity. So the officer does pay for herself.
I paid twenty dollars an hour.
And so, yeah, I want to admit I'm one of the first ones, I'm not quite as bad as Lou, but parking tickets are a pain, but parking is such a premium around here now with the construction in city hall, the loss of the parking lot across the street, you're going to be losing part of the parking lot, next to the old, uh, fireside, I mean, it's, I've got people that have, uh, permit parking, well, we have permits, we should be able to park. We're not picking on just them, we're picking on everybody. I mean, construction sucks, but we have to get this stuff done when we can, and I think it's, we would suggest, yeah, get somebody else to work.
All right, call the roll, please. West?
Yes.
Olson?
No.
Carlson?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Severson?
Yeah.
Kuz?
Yes.
Okay, that passes six to one. And that brings us down to KPU, we have nothing, vouchers?
I don't know what it is, but.
Nothing.
Nothing.
You have none, I'm sorry.
Management report, Carl, do you have anything to add?
Just two, Mr. Mayor, um, within the packet, I indicated that the borough manager had contacted my office and requested an opportunity to have the borough assessor make a presentation to the council. I can schedule that for the June sixth meeting, if that's agreeable.
How's it look full wise?
Uh, with what you deferred today, and with what I know is coming, I think we're going to have a full meeting on the sixth.
Can we make it the following meeting then?
If I will tell the borough manager, that's when we.
And that, I mean, if it's a problem for the assessor having come on down, it's completely, I was just checking the agenda.
And then a similar request, Alaska Ship and Dry Dock would like to make a presentation, I can see if that would work on the twentieth as well.
Sounds good.
That's all I have.
Now, any questions on the manager's report?
It might be worth mentioning the sales tax report.
Yeah.
Bob, do you want to talk a little bit about the sales tax report and what we have going on here?
This is our, our first report for the year, it includes the, um, the fourth quarter, starting with October through December. The returns are due on January thirty-first, and the payments are made by the taxpayers, uh, January, February, and March. Uh, we collected one million, seven hundred and fifty-four thousand, uh, we're down about nineteen thou, eighteen thousand from last year, and, um, we had projected that we were going to collect the one million, eight hundred and eighteen thousand, so we're a little bit below our projection. But I don't think it's anything to be concerned about right now, I think we need to hope for a, a very good, uh, a good summer for everyone, and, uh, those the month of May through September will be the most critical one that we need to be watching.
Thank you, Bob.
Mr. Mayor, I do have one more.
Yes.
We have been recruiting for that vacant position within the engineering division. Um, we have made an offer, and it has been accepted. Some of you who did. Some of you who did extensive touring of the fire station and the library when they were under construction, um, may be aware of Matt Brown, who worked for Dawson. He is going to come to work for us, and I think Dawson will, will get hired.
Great.
Hopefully he will be starting soon.
I'm, I'm glad about, I mean, I love the power washing. I'm glad they started last year and already started on this. Um, thank you very much for letting me know. At least I appreciate it. All right, see, and nothing else. That brings us down to... City clerks filed.
Nothing, Your Honor.
City attorneys filed?
He's not here.
Not here. Future agenda items? Mayor and council comments? KJ?
I have a request to announce this. On May twenty-ninth, this is for the council. They are going to have a meet and greet at Ketchikan Char, which is a cavalry hotel and restaurant retailers. Want to have a meet and greet over at Cape Fox at five thirty. That'll be Wednesday, the twenty-ninth. All council members are invited, invited to come up, and they will email invitations. You will get them. They just want to discuss their industry and what they, what they do in town, and I'm pretty darn sure there'll be something about this license thing.
Thank you very much.
I'll be with that.
That was, uh, Wednesday, the twenty-ninth, uh, five thirty to six thirty at Cape Fox. And you will get email invitations.
Thank you, sir. Marty?
I'm passing.
Bob?
No, I'm good. Thank you.
Matt, good to see you. Seems like I never see or ask. What's, what's, every season.
I live in the borough now.
You got me there for a second.
Yeah. Um, I had two, I had two questions before the deferment happened that I didn't get a chance to ask. Um, so Carl, on the Ted Ferry, these are my two questions, and if we can have staff answer these for the next time. Um, is there any violation of the renters agreement by the Fight Club? And then does their use cause us to not be able to rent the facility after? For a day or two? So are we losing revenue?
Deanne?
I just want to remind everyone about the rain boot race on Saturday and hope to see all their participating so we can be in the King's Club world record.
Thank you very much. Dick?
Um, only one comment. I'm, I guess I'm still waiting for some type of, uh, paper from the engineering department or management concerning metal siding on the side of this building. But I think we got a very poor answer that it doesn't work in Ketchikan last time. Oh, I think we should get it.
We shall put it in writing.
Mr. Mayor, I have a response this evening.
Oh, good.
A memo is going around. It was put together by our public works contract grant administrator, Morgan Berry. Um, back in March fifteen of two thousand and twelve, a presentation was made to the council regarding, uh, design features proposed for City Hall. The report that you're getting is really a detailed history of, of the project. But the March fifteen, two thousand and twelve meeting is, is really the, uh, focus point on that. Uh, at that point, we had indicated that our professional consultants were leaning towards the Sarah clad system as the appropriate system to use in this project. And the reasons that it had been recommended are detailed in this memorandum. That carried through, through the balance of the project design up until, uh, we were notified after the contract had been awarded to Dawson that Sarah clad was pulling out of the North American market. And we started looking at a comparable product from Nichiha. And through questions with, uh, the design engineers and the manufacturer, it was determined that that was the material that was all going to be used. Um, we provided that information via manager report to the council at the April eighteenth, two thousand meeting. So the type of cladding was known since the middle of, um, since March of two thousand and twelve, and the council was briefed on that.
Sounds good. All right, anybody else? Or Dick, anything else?
Nice history that we weren't given alternatives, and even though we missed it, we need to be thinking about it, and I think that's the main thing. We got to think a little bit better.
I think we talked, I mean, I remember talking with Sam and everybody. I mean, we discussed. I'm ha, I mean, I was happy with what they came up with, and I think we did talk about it. I guess we're on Sam.
As I pointed out in this memo, several options were presented to council, and it was recommended that the Sarah clad. And we were not given direction to pursue alternative methods.
I don't disagree. We didn't give directions.
Then four. All right, um, I was going to mention the boot race too. Thank you, Deanne. Um, and it's a boot festival down at the Plaza. Um, so that's coming up this weekend. The MS, um, um, walks this weekend too, so it's going to have a lot of things going on again this weekend, just like before, last weekend, the weekend before that. It's been busy around here. Um, there was something else. I, um, was out at the totem raising last week, and as I said, I met, talked with the governor briefly, um, about, um, our hospital project. Um, he was in, uh, good humor. Looked like he was almost in campaign mode, which nowadays campaigns start really soon. Even though it's two years away, practically. Um, there was one other item. I cannot remember. I always forget. I guess that's not a good sign. So do we have a motion to adjourn? Thank you.